So Doug, were you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Dragan, you are coming in loud and clear.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon session of January 17th. Today, we have a public hearing. This is an action item. This is the appeal of P&amp;Z denial of CUP 2242, the Brettsman Lodge. The way this will work is I will open the public hearing. I'll ask anyone on the board if they have any ex parte or conflict of interest. We'll then move to a staff report from Planning and Zoning. And after that, we'll move to a presentation of the applicant or the appellant, which is the same person this time. We'll listen to that, any questions for them. And we'll open it up to public testimony in person. First, from proponents, then uncommitted, and then opponents, and then the applicant or appellant, which is the same person will be able to rebut any of the questions or comments. We'll have more questions for you. And then, after we're done with all of our questions, I'll close the public hearing and we'll make our deliberations. So at this time, I'm going to ask if any commissioner on the board has an ex parte or conflict of interest.
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
So at this time, I'm going to take a staff report from our Planning and Zoning Director, Sinda.
So the appeal of Planning and Zoning Commission denial of CUP 22-42, Brettsman Lodge, the applicant and appellant are Ron and Tamara Brettsman. The property is addressed at 1888 West Roseberry Road in Hawks Bay subdivision lots 1, 2, and 3, block 2, in section 17, township 16, North Range 3, east of the Boise Meridian. The property is 1.7 acres and is comprised of three separate lots. Ron and Tamara Brettsman requested a conditional use permit for a short-term rental with a maximum of 26 guests. Short-term rentals requesting greater than 12 guests per night require a conditional use permit, so impacts can be identified and mitigated with conditions of approval if possible. There's an approximately 6,000 square foot family residence with a 2,000 square foot deck. The site includes three contiguous lots within Hawks Bay subdivision. The home sits on the western lots, and there is one lot between the home and the next bare lot under a different ownership. The in-between lot has been landscaped. The entire site has been landscaped with over 200 trees and leveled for proper drainage. Central sewer and water are provided by North Lake Recreation Sewer and Water District. The kitchen is on the second floor. The ground floor has a kitchenette with a sink and microwave adjacent to the game room. No stove or oven is located in the kitchenette. Access is from a loop driveway off West Roseberry Road, a public road. There's a large parking area to accommodate multiple vehicles, trailers, and recreational toys, as well as a three-car garage. No internal subdivision roads are used for ingress egress. A short-term rental permit, 2020-06, currently allows for 12 guests. The residence is also used by the applicant's extended family. Rules are posted in the cabin and on the property line with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Events and guest weddings are not allowed or requested to be allowed by the applicant. According to the State of Idaho Business Listing, the Hawks Bay Homeowners Association was dissolved in 2019. The CC and R state no building other than residential structures. This covenant does not, however, restrict the rental of the premises. Site is adjacent to Bureau of Reclamation property that is designated as the North Fort Pitt Wildlife Management Area. The Bureau of Reclamation does not prohibit use of the adjacent property for recreation activities, including snowmobiling. Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission denied CUP 22-42, Brettsman Lodge, in a public hearing on November 10th, 2022. The applicant has appealed the decision. The appeal was received in a timely manner on November 21st with the appropriate $500 fee. The appeal was attached for your review and is summarized in the following. Appellants question the due process of the public hearing and decision. Property should be based on a site-specific location. The site includes three lots, each with private entrance, ample parking, landscaping. The only opposition was from people that do not have homes or live in Hawks Bay subdivision. The closest neighbor was in favor. Hawks Bay subdivision does not have active CC and Rs. They were dissolved in 2019 and irrelevant to the application. Short-term rentals for one group at a time is not the same as a motel. Residence is typically rented by families with children, thus the desire for beds by one group. There's room for 26 people in beds. 10 of these beds are single bunk beds for kids. Impact on the neighborhood has been reduced with additional landscaping, less lighting and driveway access onto West Roseberry Road instead of Hawks Bay Road. Staff response to the appeal based on the application, presentation at the public hearing required as conditions of approval and laws of the State of Idaho and Valley County Code was used for re... Valley County Code is VCC, which you go through here. So the facts. Hawks Bay subdivision was recorded on March 29th, 2005, at Book 10, page 4. Brettsman building permit was issued on May 3rd, 2018. That was attached. Valley County Short-Term Rental Ordinance was published on May 28th, 2020. Short-term rental permit was issued on January 21st, 2021. I listed the Valley County 9-5H-12. It states each appeal must state your name, address, phone number, and then list your extent of damages, the definition of a grieved person, the definition of a single-family house or dwelling unit, or any unit or group of units in a condominium, cooperative, or timeshare, or owner-occupied residential home that's offered for a fee for 30 days or less. Is the definition of the short-term rental. 9-4-10, short-term rentals. One short-term rental is allowed on a parcel with an administrative permit. More than one short-term rental or more than one residential use on a parcel requires the conditional use permit in accordance with the Valley County Code 9-5. Idaho State Statute 67-6539 states that short-term rentals are approved uses we can guide to lessen impacts. And then I highlighted a short-term rental or vacation rental shall be classified as a residential land use for zoning purposes, subject to all zoning requirements applicable thereto. Staff comments. When the short-term rental ordinance was adopted in 2020, no specific category was created in the land use classification table or in the compatibility rating matrix for short-term rentals. So staff categorized, and the P&amp;Z Commission concurred, that short-term rentals that require a conditional use permit should be categorized as five commercial uses, C service uses, three motel, hotel, apartment, resort, bed, breakfast, or lodge. So this is me backtracking on that because they shouldn't be classified as commercial. They should be classified according to the state statute as a single-family residence. Any further review and consideration of the Idaho State statutes, I recommend short-term rentals be categorized as two residential uses, a single-family residence. If the Board of County Commissioners agree that short-term rentals should be categorized as residential uses, then staff recommends they reconsider the compatibility rating and come to a new conclusion that do not deny the application because of commercial use should not be in a residential subdivision. Legal notice for the appeal was posted in the Star News on December 22nd and December 29th. Potentially affected agencies were notified on December 15th. Property owners within 300 feet of the property line were notified by fact sheets sent December 15th. Additional people who previously commented were notified by fact sheet sent December 15th. The appeal letter, notice, and application were posted on the Valley County website on December 19th, and the site was posted December 23rd. Additional information, facts, and conclusions from the Planning and Zoning Commission were attached for your review. Their conclusions were the proposed use is not in harmony with the Valley County ordinances and policies and may be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Proposed use is not consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan which directs us to retain rural characteristics and protect quality of life within Valley County. Proposed use conflicts with Chapter 8 Gulf 4, which encourages industrial and commercial services to locate within cities in their areas of impact or areas with similar use. Valley County has one mixed-use zone that promotes mitigation of potential impacts. Every impacts of the specific use cannot be mitigated. Proposed use is a commercial use of a large short-term rental, which should have a different impact than used by a family or a maximum of 12 guests. Use is a commercial use and thus should meet commercial construction safety standards. Rental guests have used the home for family reunions, which are events that are not allowed by the short-term rental ordinance. This is a single-family residence that will be used as a commercial use. Agency comments received. Central District Health had no objections because it's serviced by North Lake Recreation Sewer and Water. SLS, Donley Fire Marshal responded with the requirements that they built into their residence. Wendy Howell, Development Service Coordinator, Idaho Transportation Department, stated the project is not about the state highway system, thus ITD has no further comments. Fason Dobis, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Field Manager, stated that the BOR does not prohibit snowmobiling on their property or in the wildlife management area until after March 1st annually. Public comments received. After the P&amp;Z Commission meeting on November 10th, Sergi and Alina Kisherny, owners of 13101 Hawks Bay Road, are opposed. 26 people renting a home will have more than an impact in a smaller group. Applicant planted small trees, which do not yet provide screening. Concerns include noise, smoke, traffic, and increase in people near their property. The adjacent bird nesting area, overburdening of public services, and a change in the desired character of the area. The purpose of the short-term rental ordinance is to implement reasonable regulations to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare in order to protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods. Lot was sold for a single-family home, not a mini hotel. It would be directly negatively impacted if use is approved. Tilt to sell, Valley County resident is opposed. Reasons for opposition are traffic, strained water in sewer systems, out-of-control gatherings requiring sheriff's response, rights of future homeowners in the area in setting a precedence allowing large short-term rentals. Michael and Tony Murphy, 13138 Hawks Bay Road, are opposed. They wish to maintain the character of the existing neighborhood and do not desire the impact of higher density the proposal would cause. The use is not consistent with the neighborhood. The 12-person limitation should be adhered to. Having extended family over is not the same as a 26-person rental. Floodlights in the front of the house generally left on most of the night. Short-term rentals have caused issues in the neighborhood. Traffic is a concern. Valley County created the short-term rental limitations for good reasons. Those exhibits were attached for you. Staff recommendations. Part of the Valley County deliberations should be a decision and a reasoned statement. And that's that Valley County Code 9-5H-11, 11.8. Idaho Code 676519 states, as part of the ordinances required or authorized under this chapter, a procedure shall be established for processing in a timely manner. Applications for zoning changes, subdivisions, variants of special use permits, and such other applications required or authorized pursuant to the chapter for which a reasonable fee may be charged. And then five, whenever a governing board is zoning or planning a zoning commission for answer denies an application, this will specify the ordinance and standards used in evaluating the application, the reasons for approval or denial, and the actions, if any, that the applicant take to obtain approval. If the Board of County Commissioners uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission denial, they should remove or add the Planning and Zoning Commission facts and conclusions. A separate document can be prepared for your approval at a later date. And if the Board of County Commissioners approve the appeal, those conditions of approval were attached. And I won't read all of those proposed conditions of approval if you decide to overturn this. Since the staff report was prepared and sent to you, we've received additional correspondence. One is a second letter from Lisa Warner-Magoon. She's the owner of Lot 3.
Is she, can I ask a question really quick? So there is an ownership... Is she W&amp;S Investments?
Yes. She's adjacent to this. She doesn't have a house on the property. She has a bare lot there.
There's Pine Shore Retreat also, but... So I don't see that the Brettsman owns three properties unless one's been combined. There's only two on the assessor's map.
They own three.
Well, okay, I'll ask him if one's been combined.
Yeah, one and two were combined, and three is still standalone.
Okay.
And then comes the W&amp;S. And then I believe the other opponent is the Pine Shore Retreat. But I'm not 100% on that. But the neighbor that has the house on here, 13102, also responded.
The one right across the street?
Yeah. I don't believe they had any concerns with it.
They're in favor of it.
But I'll let the applicant present that.
That's Malhass and Hughes?
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
I thought you were doing...
The letter from Lisa Warner was concerned with noise, BOR area, location, traffic, and property values. You all have a copy of these. One is from a letter from Donley Fire. And we received this this morning at my request. They were called to the residence at 1888 West Roseberry for sick people. Upon arrival, it was determined there were 21 people, of which 17 were sick. They checked the residence with gas detectors and found no elevated CO2 readings. There are CO2 detectors present in the house. None of them were activated. That was the big thing going around this weekend was the... And so there was no CO2 on site. I also heard food poisoning. And then the third exhibit is a letter from the applicant, and I'll let him present that. He had stopped by the fire department. He spoke with a fire marshal. Doesn't allow guests to park in the garage so that there was nothing from their vehicles. We all have a copy of those. I did pull out the CC and Rs this morning, just in case you were interested. And I found nothing in here that prohibits short-term rentals. Only thing that might be used was something that says... This is Article 3, Use of Land. Says this covenant does not, however, restrict the rental of the premises or improvements. So it doesn't restrict rentals. And then 6.7... 6.6. 7.6.6 that was quoted as being in violation for the CC and Rs before had to do with secondary units, not for a single-family residence when they have accessory dwelling units.
Do we have any other rentals in Hawks Bay?
And that ends my staff report. Are there any questions about why I kind of backed up on the change in category?
No, but I'm concerned because the reason for denial was really the commercial use. And if you reclass that to the residential use, do we need to send this back to P&amp;Z?
That would be up to you, or you can just make a different decision based upon the facts received.
There's nothing that says you have to remand it back to the P&amp;Z Commission? That's your choice? We've had four with over 12 guests in the two and a half years since we adopted this.
And is there anything in ordinance that talks about a sprinkler system and anything above 12? I know we've talked about that in the past.
The City of McCall requires that.
The City of McCall does.
That's a fire department code, isn't it?
Well, we have a letter from Jess at the fire department. Doesn't state anything like that.
It isn't? Okay, so McCall's is a fire code based upon... Just in McCall, they just passed that, didn't they?
I think it's...
All right, you go back in and retrofit a house to sprinklers in it, but...
That's McCall. I'm not quite sure what they're doing. But I can answer what Jess is doing and that they're in compliance with his requirements.
Smoke alarms. CO2 detectors. LPG detectors. Okay, any more questions for Sinda? I guess not at this time, then. Mr. Brettsman, it's your turn to... Anything you want to present or add to the record?
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys, for hearing us out today.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I need your full name and the town you live in. I don't need your address.
Ron Brettsman. I live in Nampa, Idaho.
Thank you.
I'm going to read my appeal letter. Just kind of get right to it. I'm sure you guys have looked at a lot of this already, but I'm going to go over a few things. On my appeal letter, number two, we think the property should be based on a site-by-site specific location as normal short-term rental. We have three lots. Each have their own private entrance. We have ample parking landscaping. There's also a lot of the short-term rentals in Hawks Bay. We planted over 120-foot trees and 100 smaller trees on our property. Over 100 of them are just on one lot, Lot Number 3, which blocks out a lot of Hawks Bay. So we're pretty secluded, and as they grow up, they're pretty big trees now, but they are going to get bigger, of course. On my last appeal, or my last time in November, only people that opposed our short-term rental were the people that didn't have homes or live in Hawks Bay. Lisa Warner, the one that's next to us on Lot Number 4. She's a developer, and she's going to some point sell it so her, at her best interest, I'm assuming. But our house is the largest and nicest home in that whole area. So for ours to take away value, in my mind, it's going to bring value to the community. That's my thoughts on the value idea. The CC and Rs don't say nothing about... If they were, if we had CC and Rs, nothing about that we can't have a short-term rental. Number five, of the 20... 26 guests that we are applying for, half are usually kids. Our experience, Mom and Dad and three or four adult children with spouses, and the rest are kids. When people search for a place to stay with more than 12, our cabin does not come up on the Internet. Kids are counted as a person, so 12 adults and 10 kids turn in 26 pretty quick. A room for 26 people in beds, 10 of these beds are single bunk beds. And a little comment there about we own lots. Three, our situation is, we started in 2018 building this, our dream cabin. We have plans to live in it one day once it's paid for. For now, we both work full-time on this day and when it's not occupied. Wife and I have both come from large families, and currently, we have the largest house that can fit us all for family get-togethers. How much time is especially important to us? We overbuilt knowing we could rent it out and help subsidize it along the way. Then the county changed the rules of the game midstream. We tried to do the correct thing and went through a hearing. After our first meeting, knowing they were going to deny, we pulled out and worked on all the things that we had heard that night as far as feedbacks. We implemented what we heard and tried to cover what they would ask for. In 2020, we finished and October opened it up. We've run our cabin for two years, advertising 26 guests. I know you're saying to yourself, "Well, that's wrong." And I agree, however, we have no choice. We were unable to afford our cabin without help from renting. Then you say, "Why did you overbuild?" Because the rules changed after we were about done and had no choice but to finish the plan. Then you ask why not drop the price for per-night rent amount? Well, my answer is easy. We don't want the riffraff from renting to people who won't respect the work that's been put into the cabin or the rules, and also surrounding neighbors. Tried this, and what we found was when a younger group rented, they were partying, being noisy, and breaking things in the cabin. We'd do much better when Mom and Dad have a few adult kids and grandkids. We have been invited to many dinners with our guests, and they ask all kinds of questions, such as how it was built, how long did it take to build, et cetera. We meet almost every renter, and during this interaction, they invite us back. We have taken many out on our, on tomb boat. We tell them we are just around the corner if they need anything to call. We have at least 100 comments from people that have come and signed our guestbook on how this place has brought their family back together again. People have spent money on local businesses, raftings, zip line, rope course, and many buy food locally and support local restaurants. We have attached letters, a few letters from guests that we copied from our storybook. Something I heard at the last meeting was the family reunion is considered an event. Anything with a scheduled time is considered an event. Family's coming together, the family reunion, and people renting a house is an event. I mean, how many people are there? But the question is, what are we after? We don't want weddings or other large gatherings that create extra noise for the neighbors. We don't want the extra traffic wearing our place out either. So here we are, two years later. Not one complaint from anyone. Our neighbors are not stupid. They know we have more than 12 guests. We have more than 12 cars in the driveway many times. We do get out and speak to our neighbors. We are the only... We are one of four members of the Architect Committee of Hawks Bay that approves new homes coming in. We have floodlights on our place that are used... Are used for when I snowplow and work after dark. Didn't realize how bright they were when you added snow on the ground. We had a complaint from Allison, a neighbor, back in 2020. And we resolved that, and we are now friends. We do not use those, these anymore since emergency and someone lost a kid, lol. We have planted several trees, over 200 of them, over 20 or 20 feet tall. Any smaller ones, can't see past. Our traffic does not affect Hawks Bay Road one bit since our guests don't use that road. Regarding our renters, the cars entering onto Roseberry, issue of having more guests causing more traffic. We have the best view to see both directions leaving our driveway. No issues, and remember, half of the people are little kids and don't drive. Also, on a side note, we have not had any accident or anyone has been hurt in a crash on that corner due to our cabin being rented. From what we have seen, they happen mostly in winter. Most of the traffic is coming to or from Tamrac just going too fast for the 15 mile an hour corner, on slick roads. A lot of times, I do pull cars back onto the road when I'm up there. So to get to my point of my rambling, we need help in finding a way to allow more guests to come to our place. You know, the word lodge dumped some people on the board, and they could not get past it. Named of that because it's just a big cabin. Forty toxidermy animals, it looks like a lodge, but is 401 family. Wouldn't want to come stay at a lodge, but it's truly one-of-a-kind, handcrafted cabin. We could give it a new name if it would help. Could sound better to some and not be so confusing. Though the name could be Single Family Vacation Home for the larger families that want to stay and play together and make memories, is really what it is. I heard Sinda make a comment that they came up with 12 people because that would be 12 people in three bedrooms house. If a six-bedroom house, which should allow 24 people, if the rules is four to a bedroom. If we have five bedrooms with an adult parents and some kids, four people in a room, that's 20. Mom and Dad is the six, 20 people. We'd like to get 26 people, but open to 20, whatever you suggest. Our cabin is very capable of accommodating that many people with beds for everyone, and that stated in the comments application for Jody from your office. Please help us to know the direction you'd... Please help us to know what direction we need to go. We're at a loss. Really haven't... We have really put our heart and souls into this cabin. Don't want to lose it. Also went on to put the dates of our current... Like our renters that came through December, all of last year. Average about three people stay per month. Well, some stay for about a week at a time, three to five days. And I would list out all those. It was varied from 12 guests to 26 typical month. There's three families. We also have a lot over on Westwood Drive that we stay at during the summertime. When the cabin is rented, we will stay at our fifth wheel. If not be rented, we will stay at the cabin and go back and forth to Nampa when we can. But we're very close when we are staying nearby. You've got some letters. I'm sure you've seen them. I need to read those to you. So I'm going to kind of wrap up my stuff real quick. But so from the incident this weekend, bring that up. We had an... We had an... We had an unfortunate situation happen at the cabin Sunday around 3:00 a.m. We had a single extended family staying, both parents and four kids with spouses and 11 kids, grandkids, including toddlers. 21 in total were staying there of all the guests, and 17 of them were sick. The first thought was CO2. After talking with my renter Sunday afternoon, it could have been bad food they brought. We first thought this was bad timing, just before our meeting with you folks. Then we thought more about it. This was an unfortunate situation, as far as I know. We don't know what caused it, but we learned a lot from it. First things first, I must always meet the renters, do a walkthrough, make sure they have each other's phone numbers. And in case we... We exchanged phone numbers, make sure we got them. And we did that with these, with this group. I met them. They came in. I met them, they came in. We also have our numbers in the cabin on the wall as well. So, the renters called me at six, at three AM, and I answered. They passed the phone to Jess from the fire department. He asked, "How do I get into the mechanical room?" I told him where I hide, where I have my hide key, and he was able to gain access within minutes. They wanted to check the levels in the mechanical room, because I can keep it locked. They said several people have CO2 poisoning. He asked questions, trying to find the source. They could not play, they could not, and the place tested clean. They did come back again nine AM, Sunday morning, and checked again, still clean. And they mentioned CO2. I was baffled, because nothing in the cabin emits CO2. Our heat is radiant on all floors, with a boiler that heats the water in a closed system. Our fireplace is propane, gas sealed, you can't open it. We don't allow guests to park in the garage, so no cars could idle. Our barbecue is propane outside. We have tests for these, we have tests for these situations, even though chance of CO2 is rare in our cabin. Propane leak could be possible. We have a LP alarm in the mechanical room, and downstairs, and second floor, along with fire alarms and CO2 alarms. Paramedics had easy access, a clean plowed driveway, a large enough house to assess people. As this was a scary situation, we learned a lot. Luckily, everyone was fine the next day, I stopped to check on them. I choose to learn from the situation and keep improving. Comment, so that's what I got for right now. There's more, I guess, some letters. Mostly, from my experience, from my, what I've seen so far, is the renters who are complaining don't, don't live there, or they are, don't live there very often. Maybe it's their home for a couple ti- times a year, I'm not sure. We've made plenty of trees, plenty of, and hired our place, and no complaints in two years, so, that's what I got for now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. Is there any questions for Mr. Bresman?
Yeah, sorry.
Real quick. I mean, when you're written to a group, you're written to a group, you're not written per person.
No, I'm written to one, one person, and then this their group.
It's their group.
Which is usually, it's almost always mom and dad and kids with grandkids.
Right. Okay.
I've never had a multi, unknown people in the same house.
So it's not too different?
Never too, too different.
Gotcha.
People. House is not broken up. It's, you rent the house, house is all yours, you don't rent one bedroom.
Okay. So Ron, I got a question for you, and your, some of your rebuttal stuff, you talk about the neighbors, I think their names were Keshurni, Keshurni, Serge and Elena, Keshurni. Something about the neighbor next door, we're not against this yet. I have here in the, in the information that they are adamantly opposed. Can you talk about that at all?
Yep. I think they're going to, I own lot one, two, and three, and I think they are down at the other end of Hawks Bay. And it says that they're part-time residents up there. I've never talked to them, never met them, they're never at their house. I'm not sure who exactly they are.
So my base of my question, I guess, is then that, if I'm a person, and I bought a lot in Hawks Bay, at the time there were CCNRs, thinking that we're not gonna have short-term rentals, we're not gonna have something like this happen. And then the CCNRs go away, do you think that's fair to those folks, that you should be permitted to continue?
I...
Their CCNRs didn't state there was no short-term.
Realize it.
I know that this couple bought the house after, I've been there. They've came, their house is after my house. I was there first. They can't see my house from their house at all. They have to go out onto Roseberry and head towards Tamrac to see it. Given any lights I would have, wouldn't affect their place. Several houses between us and them, larger homes. That answers what you're asking.
Hey, any more questions for Mr. Bresman? Ron, I'm gonna open this up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open this up for testimony of proponents of the appeal. That means you're in favor of this appeal. Is there anyone in the audience? Please let the record show there was none. Is there any in the audience that is uncommitted? Just let the record show there is none. This time, I'll take testimony of opponents of the appeal, and I have a list. And I want to remind everyone that you have three minutes, and I will shut you off at the three-minute bell. First one up is Mr. Gallipoli. I need your name and the town you live in, not your address.
David Gallipoli, McCall. Due process requires the legal matters be resolved according to established rules and principles, and that individuals be treated fairly. While I often disagree with our county zoning board and commissioners on some applications, I did attend the Brunson Lodge zoning hearing. I agree with the comments our zoning commissioner has made to deny the application. It was a fair hearing. The short-term rental industry and those renting their homes as short-term rentals have created safety, housing, business staffing issues in Valley County. While the law is clear, you cannot restrict short-term rentals, there are some things you can do. Last year, the city of McCall approved new ordinances, increased fees, annual inspections, and bedroom capacity changes, to protect neighbors that live in short-term rentals and visitors who rent their homes. The McCall Fire Chief even recommended fire suppression systems for rentals with more than twelve persons. The city of McCall wants to pass a fire suppression ordinance, but needs to explore the legal issues to require this. It seems crazy we need to fight to protect people. There are also many cases of abuse and lack of enforcement once a home becomes a short-term rental. It's concerning that Sundays, there were more than twelve people that were renting this home. Sixteen individuals were transported to St. Luke's Hospital in McCall. Twenty-six occupants seems excessive, when it appears there were more than twelve occupants staying there Sunday. There is an appearance this home is already operating as a small motel, without the safety requirements motels are required to have. The appeals stated that public opposition comments were made from people who do not have homes or live in Hawks Bay subdivision. That isn't entirely true. But indeed, I live in McCall in Valley County. I share the same roads, experience the same traffic, drink the same water, frequent businesses in Cascade, Donley, Lake Fork, and McCall, enjoying all the beauty of Valley County has to offer. Valley County is my community, St. Luke's is my hospital, and I'm concerned our EMS, about our EMS crisis. Did the Brunson Incident Sunday stretch Donley EMS and the staff at St. Luke's? Are you concerned? An approval may also set a precedent for other large rentals that will compound all the issues short-term rentals continue to create for people living here. While you often state you believe in property rights, I agree with individual property rights. I disagree when you allow one individual's properties to impact many individuals' property rights negatively. There must be balance. I also believe in community rights, which should be part of any application discussion. Community rights are set by the powers that give you commissioners a say over how our community develops. You can decide what is built and how the area should be developed with the help of community input, and I believe you need community input. No law requires you to approve a conditional use permit to increase this residence from twelve to twenty-six guests. It appears the owners already rent to more than twelve guests. Please do not set a precedent for other homeowners to make their homes into mini motels.
Thank you, David. Next person up is Linda Eddy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Linda.
Linda Eddy, Donley, Idaho. Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Mr. Hasbrook, Ms. Mopin, and Mr. Thompson, and Clerk, Mr. Miller, and Cindy. I do not live within three hundred feet of this property, I do not live in Hawks Bay, but my number one concern is, is your code and your rule of twelve. Are we going to change that rule now? Could this happen in my subdivision? Could it happen anywhere now? That's, that's my main concern. I have a couple of lots. I, our son has two next door, I could build a lodge, or a six-bedroom, eight-bedroom home, and I know what the impact would be if I was a next-door neighbor, and probably his neighbors. And so that's my main concern, that I would not like this application. I have spoke with Ms. Warner, she did send me her email of her concerns, and, well, her last name isn't Warner anymore, it's Magoon. And, number one is the location and the density of the area. That curve is probably one of the, and I've been here many years in Valley County. That curve is one of the most dangerous curves in our county. And I have to disagree with Mr. Bresman, it doesn't matter which way you're going, if you're going east or west, that curve is extremely dangerous. Yes, people drive too fast, but even driving slow, with his two entrances and with Hawks Bay's entrance, it is extremely. So let's say all twenty-six cars are leaving at the same time, you have a hundred and fourteen leaving Tamrac at the same time, it is definitely going to be a very dangerous, even with twelve people, and there'll probably twenty-four cars if there's twelve people there. So, that's mine. Okay, the BOR, you talk about March, and that's what they testified. After March, which is gonna be all these people there, the BOR, that's one of the biggest nesting areas along that area, right through there. So that's another concern of mine. And then, again, I mentioned the traffic, and the daily traffic coming and going through that area. Property valuations, that was kind of brought up here, he mentioned. Yes, he's got a beautiful home that's worth millions, that's true. But you take Ms. Warner, and other people in Hawks Bay, and they see hundreds of people coming and going, let's say hundreds, twenty-six people coming from going there, are they gonna want to buy that lot next to that property? I would, I probably wouldn't, if I saw it happening. That, that would be another thing with valuation. Her lot, and maybe other lots, are not gonna be of value, because it says single family. So again, I ask that the commissioners, please deny this application for twenty-six.
Thank you, Mrs. Eddy. Tina Bleese, say that right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, I get all kinds. My name's Tina Bleese, I live in Donley, and I'm one of the full-time residents on Hawks Bay, so I'm also speaking for Alan Hatzenbuehler and her family as well. So, our neighborhood is very diverse, and I absolutely love it. There's full-time residents there, there is part-time residents, there are vacation home residents, and there are a couple Airbnb's. So, we get the big family events on the weekends, and that's wonderful to hear. We get the families that are in their hot tubs, and you hear the children laughing. Now, these events are absolutely wonderful. But there has been issues with the lodge at the end of Hawks Bay. And we don't complain, because we're just not that type of a neighborhood. It's very well spaced out, and so there's a lot of room, but when it comes to the weekends, and even during the week when that, that particular house is full, it is full. We, there have been events there, and I know there's, there's weddings, there's been parties there, lots of activity, and it's noisy on the weekends, and so as a full-time resident, you know, we look forward to a quiet weekend, but it really isn't that way. It's like, oh my gosh, what activity or what event's gonna be happening down at the lodge down at the end of Hawks Bay? Are we gonna have it to be quiet, or are we going to have to deal with a lot of noise? In the wintertime, there has been snowmobiles that have raced up and down. In the summertime, there's the razors and the dirt bikes that race up and down Hawks Bay. There's also the BOR land, and again, it can be used in a, in a nice way, but there are rules about the nesting, and a lot of the renters, they don't know that. So they are going over to the Hawks, you know, they're jumping the fence, they're going down into that area, they're walking around during nesting season. So it's, it's the pride of ownership that having lived there, and the, the love of the non-motorized side of the lake is, is really special. But there has been boats with little motors that come in to the beach area, the dirt, I'm sorry, the, the trash that we do pick up is there, and I just can't even imagine having the ability of knowing that there is approval of twenty-two or more people that will be there either long-term on, during the weeks, on the weekends, and how much more we're gonna have to take to keep our neighborhood as beautiful and as pristine for the environment as we are having to do now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Joy Petrie.
Hello, thank you, Commissioners, Clerk Miller, and Cindy. Cindy, thank you for allowing me to be here and speak. First, I'd like to re, remind the commission that there are CCNRs. I am not a resident, and I am a neighbor. I am not a neighbor, I am an advocate for the neighbors, and I'll go with the community every time, basically, when they put their input in. It's unfortunate that these people have invested so much, and are using their projected incomes as their reason to build. That's unfortunate for a lot of people in this community, and I just, you know, as David stated with his, with his remarks, there's a lot of things that need to be considered. So, not to belabor anything, I won't go into any of that, but, you know, my concern is the safety and the well-being of the community, and what their views are, and how they feel their community should be. I'm sorry, I'm sympathetic to you guys, that you've made it considerable, it is a beautiful place. I'll say it's a beautiful place, and there's no question about that, but I do think that the community needs to be considered in the greater good above a short-term rental situation that, that goes over, goes over the limits of what's requested from the commissioners in planning and zoning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Joy.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Scroggins, online, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
I'm assuming you're, you're opponent of the appeal?
Yes.
Okay, so you go ahead, it's your turn.
Okay. Patty Scroggins, Donley. Although I am not a resident of Hawks Bay subdivision, I am a full-time resident of Donley and live here out in this area. I travel the single roads here, I utilize the infrastructure of the post office, the gas station, and may need to utilize other services such as sheriff or ambulance. However, all of these services are available to residents, but at a limited capacity for the small population that currently resides in this area. Continuing to allow people to develop in manners that are going to overload the infrastructure, such as the proposed Brunson Lodge of twenty-six people, it will negatively impact Valley County. It's going to impact our roads that are already strained due to the increased traffic from Tamrac, Tamrac Resort. This is a two-lane road that during the winter becomes an even smaller road. The roads are never cleared in a timely manner, and it decreases the side of, size of the road, and makes it dangerous and treacherous. There have been several accidents here in the last couple weeks that prove this point. There's also another issue to consider, and that is allowing residential areas to become a, become a mini hotel or motel. If the house is zoned residential, single-family dwelling, it has already stretched the zoning with being a rental for twelve. Now they want twenty-six. Although it's interesting to hear the applicant speak today that they've already been renting to people. He had noted on the incident the other day with the twenty-one people, first it was extended family, but then he continued to explain in that they were renters. So they're already renting above and beyond what they're allowed to do so. And when it, when does it stop? And when do our government officials make people follow zoning and variances and not create development that stresses, stresses our infrastructure? Thank you.
Thank you. This is all we have on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience or online that is an opponent of this appeal? Or a proponent, or is, is uncommitted? Last time, do, add your two cents worth. Okay, at this time, then we, you're allowed, Mr. Bresman, any rebuttal to some of the comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. But first off, David's comment about the motel, we just used the one family. A lot of one family, which is mom and dad and kids and grandkids. There's never, two different families in the same house, ever. The curb, we have lot number one comes out on the curb, you can see down the street and see that street exactly. You can see both directions, the whole corner is covered. Lot number two is over here, you can see this direction, a little harder to see, but this one is very, very clear. And as, as far as noise goes, we, noise, we have ten cameras exterior, and all, every corner's got two cameras both directions with sound. You can hear, hear people talk. It's in, it's in our website, or I mean, whatever the onsite Airbnb is. It says we got ten cameras in use at all times for our protection and yours. We can hear, see what goes on. One of our first issues was with our neighbor Allison, she's down a thousand yards, like lot number seven or eight. I spoke to her before I did this, and she hasn't, she has, she has no complaints at all about us in the two years we've been staying there. And then as far as building a, a large house, we built a large house before the ordinances got changed. So we went, we built it expecting to have larger families, and we have three lots. If you have a one rental house per lot, that's twelve guests times three, still twenty-six people on the same footprint that we're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Hey, any, any questions for the applicant?
I would like to know, so what I'm hearing is you live around the corner.
I would like to know, so what I'm hearing is you live around the corner. That's your part-time, you own another cabin somewhere that's around the corner?
Over on Westwood, we have another lot that we have our fifth wheel on during the summertime. Wintertime, I stay at my friend James Knight's house. That's where I stay in this weekend when this incident happened, that's just right around the corner. I came over the next day and met with my guests.
So do you guys use a management company?
Nope, it's me.
You're managing yourself? Is, have you provided all of your contact information to all the neighbors in case there are issues?
The ones that I do know of.
Do you guys have a trash service contract?
Yes, we got three garbage cans.
Are all of your rules posted inside the home? I think that's the ones I have right now.
On a side note, we actually have the garbage can guys come into our turner. Ours is the last lot, so they use our driveway as a turnaround, in and out. They pick up our cans inside the property to protect them from the traffic out there.
Hey, Neil, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
I do have a question for Cindy before we close.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So Cindy, the rule of 12, so we established 12 because of the number of bedrooms that were associated. You said that we have four that are larger. What size properties were those, and were they in residential neighborhoods? Do you remember?
I do not, I didn't research that. I know that one was denied, or he grew up in the Fayette River subdivisions because he didn't want to comply with the requirements of the fire department. I know that there's one out on Farm to Market Road. I did not do that research. But I would like to read where the 12 comes in, and maybe talk a little bit about that. Title 9410, 2, C9 states, "At no time shall occupancy..." Let's see, "There will be limited legal bedrooms with proper egress windows or central district health limitations. At no time shall occupancy exceed four people per bedroom, a three maximum with 12 people, unless a condition use permit is obtained." It doesn't state you can't have over 12, it just states you have to get the condition use permit.
I thought it said.
And the way the Planning and Zoning Commission came up with that 12, I think we talked about when we adopted this ordinance. And that was, you know, what can be expected for a family? Most houses are three bedrooms, four people. I mean, it was all speculation, there was nothing that drew us specifically to that number 12. It seemed like a reasonable cutoff, and then they can get a condition use permit so we can assess the impacts and apply conditions to mitigate the impact.
So this was like based on an average size home? Kind of...
Great.
Yeah.
And Bureau of Reclamation, in their letter, did they talk about bird nesting areas or any kind of...
Yes.
...negation? Okay.
Yeah, well, there's no mitigation, it's just that they don't allow snowmobiling down there after March, or March beyond.
Okay.
And I believe...
Their testimony.
...should be posted.
And I'm sorry, but I didn't read the testimony from fencing. So is there fencing at the backside of the Brunsmans? So the snowmobiles can't get out the back of this property? They have to go out onto the road? Or how do they get to the BOR?
I think there's breaks in the fence. Might clarify that with the applicant. But BOR said that yes, they can snowmobile down there. It's a public recreation area, except after March with the birds.
Okay.
Says, "They don't prohibit until after March 1st." After March 1st, they prohibit snowmobiling.
Well, they prohibit a lot of stuff.
Yes, for the nesting.
I would imagine by then, it's getting pretty broken up on the side anyway. Mr. Brezman, do you have it posted? As far as no snowmobiling after a specific date? Do you have fencing that actually prohibits snowmobiling out the back of this property?
We've got little markers that say don't go, that you can't get past them. And also tell them not to drive anywhere back there. Up off of our lot number one, right side by the road, there's a large trail that takes you down to the... Access that all they want. I tell them they can go out that corner there, keeps them out of my backyard and the neighbors.
Cindy, when do you, when do we come to a point when this is not only, it's not a residential use, but a commercial use? I mean, if somebody built a 10-bedroom house, they could have 50 or 60 people.
According to Idaho 676539, short-term rentals are always considered semi-residential.
Is there any requirements that the owner has to live there or be there a certain amount of time? So I'm assuming this doesn't get a homeowner's exemption or anything like that?
No. I think we do need to look at, you know, in our subdivision ordinance. I think we need to strengthen it a bit because the short... Honestly, I think this was looked at incorrectly at Planning and Zoning because everything they denied it on was based on commercial use. And this is residential, we have to look at it as residential use. We don't have an option. But I think, you know, else points well taken. You can't, the size of the structure, you know, we're not gonna put 60 people in a residential neighborhood. Unfortunately, the HOA is not in place. You guys really need to strengthen your HOA out there and put that HOA back in place to enforce the CCNRs that are there. Because in our view, when there is no HOA, there are no CCNRs because you can't enforce them. So your HOA is defunct at the state.
CCNRs were lost in 19?
CCNRs are still there. The HOA was dissolved.
Okay.
So the HOA needs to apply with the state again if they are in fact in place, because I just checked and it is not. The HOA is not a valid and legal organization right now, so you have no enforcement mechanism. And I'm telling everybody, you need to enforce your CCNRs. You know, you need to put the structure in place to enforce those CCNRs.
The original CCNRs did not prohibit renting of the properties.
So then those people that bought in Hawks Bay knew that there could be a short-term rental coming to their development?
Well, they have been right now.
Unfortunately, my computer has died and it's 3:03 already.
This covenant does not, however, restrict the rental of the premises or improvements upon the premises.
I'm looking at the, well...
How do we enforce CCNRs?
No, we don't.
About that in a minute.
So the commercial piece is irrelevant at this time?
That's my recommendation, based upon that state statute. The staff had led them down that commercial because we didn't know how to categorize it. Because when we adopted the ordinance, we didn't create a separate category. But after looking into the state statute more on short-term rentals, it specifically says it has to be considered residential. So that's why I changed it here after the P&amp;Z had already gone off of our original recommendation. So it's staff that has changed.
So is there anything in the ordinance so that we talked about a maximum of 12 guests, no matter how big your facility is?
It just says unless condition use permit is...
Oh, that's right.
I don't have any other questions for the applicants. Can I ask of legal counsel, or do you want me to close, wait until after?
Um, let's wait until we close. Neil, do you have any more questions?
No.
Good. I think I'm good too. So at this time, we will close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Now would be the time to ask your legal counsel.
So again, I would ask you, because this was based on a commercial denial, do you feel like this needs to go back in front of Planning and Zoning to look at it differently around that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Moth and Brian Okey with Prosecutor's Office. So procedurally, you have two options. You can remand back to Planning and Zoning for further findings with specific instructions. But also remember, and this is option two, this is a de-noble hearing. So you can take the information that's provided to you, make your own findings a fact, and make your own decisions independent of what was done at Planning and Zoning. So you can do either of the two. If you have access to the internet, I would have you pull up 676539 and take a look at it. Because you do have some options within that statute that's specific to short-term rentals to impose reasonable regulations to protect the health and welfare and character of residential neighborhoods. Cindy is correct. For zoning purposes, short-term rentals have to be classified as single-family dwellings.
I would say that Allen County 9-5H-128 says the board may sustain, deny, amend, or modify the decision of the commission. The decision of the board is final and need not be referred back to the commission except the board may refer it back to the commission with specific instructions.
I guess honestly, my biggest concern is twofold. And you've kind of answered one of them, the fact that the CCNRs don't restrict this. So as long as everybody knew that, buying into that neighborhood, they knew that there's a possibility this could happen, that kind of covers that. My second concern is, if I remember right, this is a two-story facility. And I'm concerned about people being able to get out of it if you get a fire. Do we need to require fire escapes? Do we need to fire? Are ladders or some way for folks to get out of it? Are they gonna be trapped upstairs? Those are the things I don't know, I don't have.
It met the requirements of the fire department.
You think that's good enough?
They're the experts, unfortunately. But I hear your point, maybe we should require...
That could be a condition to mitigate, you know, impacts.
Hotels have to do it, and I'm thinking, why hotels and motels have to do it? I mean, why not require it for this? I've never been to a motel, or excuse me, a hotel, that didn't have fire escapes and didn't have fire escape plans on every door and where you go in case of fire. And I don't know if any of that's been done.
Yes, they do, they have evacuation routes in the house.
You do?
They're posted, we require that as part of the short-term rental.
Oh, okay. So that's pretty well covered then.
And again, if we have to look at it as residential, I mean, that would be a commercial application if you required that. That's the confusing part to me, to be honest with you. But these are my concerns.
Yeah. Again, the code, and I'm just looking at the code, not the ordinance, but you should refer to both. The basis for either your approval or denial of the application and the conditions that you want to impose need to be based on health and safety and protection of the residential character of the neighborhood, not on a commercial use. So that's where your legal authorities lie, is within the health and safety standards. Does it put unreasonable impacts on infrastructure and emergency services? Or is it non-conforming or incompatible with the residential character based on its residential use, not as a commercial use?
It's an emergency act, part of the short-term rental.
Do you know, Cindy, does he have some kind of a contact information given to his neighbors so that if there is an issue, they can call?
When we issue a short-term rental permit, we send that permit out to the neighbors.
Oh, within...
So they have the contact information, have everything.
Okay.
And we give it to dispatch.
Unfortunately, Brian, my computer's dead, so I can't look up 6339, but...
It was part of those instructions.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I'm looking at the one lady that actually is next door. She owns the lot next to you and looks like a developer, WNS Investments. She owns like five or six lots in there. So what is her, you know, future use? Who knows? It could just be single-family residential. The gentleman that was adwelling opposed, fine shore retreat. He's gonna build the same thing, he doesn't have a structure on it. I'm listening to the current landowners. Tina's the only one that actually lives there. And so I'm listening to her concerns, weekend events. Unfortunately, we have to look at this as residential, and we can't state this is an event venue versus a residential home. And so how do we mitigate that? And I think maybe 26 is too many. I don't know what that number is yet, I'm still thinking that through my mind. Having had a large rental in back of me, I understand the neighbors' concerns. And what would have helped in my situation was making sure that every neighbor knew exactly how to get ahold of you, that you have a mitigation plan in place, and the next one is call 911 when there's issues. Making sure all your rules are posted inside, trash is taken care of. The 12 was designed specifically, when we spoke about that, for a CUP, that these larger units could come in and request it based upon their location. The reason that I'm leaning potentially in favor of increasing the size a little bit is you guys own three lots. This is not a standard lot in a subdivision. I mean, this is not a standard quarter acre where you're next door to people, and he's landscaping things around him. So the curb danger is being addressed at the county level. We are currently working with BOR to straighten out that curb because it is the most dangerous, I agree with you. And so BOR is currently, we're under conversations with them to make change there. Bird nesting needs to be posted, period. This is not just unique to your lodge. BOR needs to make sure that that is posted, but you need to make sure that that's also posted. CCNRs, they allowed it right up front. The infrastructure stress, I understand. We have an issue with roads out there that we are needing to mitigate. If you were building today, you know, we'd probably be asking for some kind of financial compensation to work on the roads. The thing that's giving me pause is the fact that this was changed. We changed it midstream of them building. It'd take you a while to build, I will tell you that, though. So I don't know whose fault that one was, but there is a lot between them and the neighbors. And they are right next to the BOR. So site-specific, this is probably the best place to do this type of thing. That's mine.
And, you know, for me, I look way down the road. It may not be way down the road either. I mean, they're wanting to use this as short-term rental, which they're doing. And eventually, they'll pay this house off, and then they'll have their 26 kids in that house. But, you know, as families grow, just like anything else, they'll still have a lot of folks there irregardless. Kids grow up, and so it's not gonna change much that way. The one thing I know out there is that you cannot access their place from Hawks Bay. You have to physically go outside of Hawks Bay on the east, west Roseberry to go back into their place. And so that's a nice asset to what they have set up. And here, in what way, I've heard from staff about strictly residential. It's me to a point where I don't believe legally we can push that out. It's more of a, it's more of a, that's a bold issue here.
Well, I think that, to come back on that, I think we need to discuss with P&amp;Z down the road, that, you know, how big can you build? I mean, as far as an Airbnb, if that's your intent, or as a rental, how many, somebody could build a giant hotel and have 100 guests, we can't. You know, we've lost control of that.
An ordinance change would have to happen to be able to go there.
And I think that's appropriate, I think we do need to look at that.
Yeah.
That would be number of bedrooms in a single-family residence. So if you're choosing to approve this, I have conditions of approval.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Cindy, my computer is clearly dead, it's plugged in, but nothing's happening.
Read through. The application, the staff report, and the provisions of the Land Use and Development Ordinance are all made part of this permit as if written in full herein. Any violation of any portion of the permit will be subject to enforcement and penalties in accordance with Title 9-2-5, and may include revocation or suspension of the condition use permit. Any change in the nature or scope of land use activity should require an additional condition use permit. Issuance of this permit, these conditions will not relieve the applicant from complying with applicable county, state, or federal laws or regulations that be construed as permission to operate in violation of any statute or regulations. Violation of these laws, regulations, or rules may be grounds for evocation of the condition use permit or grounds for suspension of the condition use permit. Must comply with the requirements of the Donley Fire District. A letter of approval is required. District. A letter of approval is required. All lights should be fully shielded so that there's not upward or horizontal projection of lights. This includes any pathway lighting. Quiet hours for ten PM to seven AM. All noxious weeds on the property must be controlled. Shall obtain a signed permit prior to installation of a sign. Shall mark property lines and post Bureau of Reclamation rules. No events are allowed. This includes small weddings, et cetera, that would create noise impacts and increase traffic. Smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors should be installed throughout the home and inspected by Donley Rural Fire. There should be fire extinguishers on each level of the home and one near any outside. LPG grills, LP gas detectors will be installed. Must comply with the payment of sales tax in accordance with Idaho State Code Title sixty-three, Chapter thirty-six. Shall post rules and emergency contact information in the home. There's a maximum occupancy of twenty-six rental guests. Maximum occupancy must be reflected in all advertisements. Maximum number of guests includes day guests and/or visitors. Airproof traffic, airproof trash cans are recommended. No parking in the setback areas or easement areas. All fire rings should be no larger than three feet in diameter. Shall have shovel bucket and fire extinguisher available near the fire pit. And must mark Bureau of Reclamation property lines. Oh, I, that's a duplication. So there's eighteen conditions.
Cindy, I think we need to maybe add one more that I'm, I'm concerned about. Um, the National Area has been something that's been there a long, long time, and a lot of people want that protected. Is there any way we could have the applicant sign the border between himself and the bureau ground for, uh, no trespassing after March first? Or something like that to keep folks from, hundred or four-wheelers down there? There's, you know, that kind of stuff?
Must mark-
Did you already say it?
Yeah. Must mark Bureau of Reclamation property lines and post rules of use with dates of closing.
Okay, okay. That'll cover that.
So Cindy, that, that's no trespassing. It's, uh, it's no snowmobiling after-
Snowmobiling after March first.
March first, yeah.
I think twenty-six is too much though in that area. What'd you guys think of a number? I'm leaning toward eighteen.
I don't want to-
I mean, if you have-
I don't want to put a number on it.
They're saying grandparents, mom, dad, everybody has two kids. That's four more. You know, that's six. You give a number of kids.
It's a six-bedroom house, right? Six bedrooms, so times four would be twenty-four. No?
I mean, we don't have to go up to the maximum number of people per bedroom.
No, if we can say that. Our ordinance says four per bedroom.
He has six bedrooms. Well, he, he has ten, um, bunk beds. Total occupant bunk beds. And then six bedrooms.
That's twenty. That's twenty. Like, doesn't our ordinance say four per bedroom?
Well, it says six per bedroom.
It is a condition of use permit.
I'm sorry, four per bedroom. I'm sorry, with six bedrooms.
If we have six bedrooms, the maximum we could have is twenty-four. Right?
Yep. If you did four, six, it's twenty-four.
If you do four people per bedroom, it's twenty-four.
Still think as a mitigation for the community that we should limit, right? You know, twenty, but that's my input.
So, Mr. Bresman, how many do you actually really think you need?
Because the kids count as people. I'd like it twenty-four if I could.
Kids count as people?
Unfortunately, they don't let the kids count as a person.
We call environments in our house, but-
Babies count too, so.
So I, I don't think we can go over twenty-four.
He's going twenty-four.
I'm good with twenty-four. Ready for a motion? So if you are ready to give me one, you bet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve CUP twenty-two dash forty-two Brunson Lodge appeal, um, based on the conditions of approval that staff has.
Maximum twenty-four?
Maximum twenty-four.
That would be one of the conditions, right, Cindy?
Yes. I'll change number fifteen to maximum occupancy of twenty-four.
Well, and I think it's important for the rest of the public to know that we have to have some kind of an ordinance, some kind of a rule in order to deny or approve everything in Valley County. And in this case, we don't. I mean, your comments about community feelings and all that certainly is a part of my decision, but, um, Boise County went through this quite a few years back on a, kind of a similar deal down in Garden Valley and turned it down because the community didn't like it and got sued. And it cost them over eight million dollars in general fund. Dollars because they got taken to task on that. I'm not going to risk the county having to pay that kind of a cost. Just because you don't like it, that's not a good enough reason to turn something down. Um, and that's the toughest part about this job is sometimes you don't like the way the county's going, but you don't have any legal means to turn it down. And I don't think we do here either. So I'm going to second Neil's motion. Any more discussion?
Chairman, can I just make sure that the motion is recorded accurately? Mr. Thompson made a motion to approve CUP twenty-two dash forty-two Brunson Lodge appeal based on the conditions of approval that were provided by staff with an additional condition that the maximum occupancy be twenty-four occupancy.
Sounds right.
So it's not an additional, it's a change to number fifteen on the staff recommendations? I don't know how you want to list that, but... And then I do think that we need to look at our ordinance and put some kind of limitations to the size of these things moving forward, whether it's per bedroom or per square foot.
I think, yes. After your motion, I'll tell you.
So basically, the motion is to approve your appeal and approve the CUP. That make sense? Okay. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What's your carries?
International Civil law, my custom limitations on number of bedrooms, but we have to look. I know that there was seventeen bedrooms down on the lake.
Oh, my gosh. If that's internet, it sounds like a PUD, it's kind of a-
Oh, in Donley, for single-family use.
Hey, thank you guys for coming in. Good luck. I think you know the neighbors are watching you, so stay on top of it. And hopefully, we can all make this work.
Know the county is too, because this is a condition of use permit. So if you don't abide by those conditions, we will remove that condition.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, please.
Yeah, this is a bad, I'm, I'm staff. I mean, I'm sorry about that. But, and I did, um, already, uh, discussed this with the P and Z commission, and they're fine with it. I told them we have to be very, very residential and they're fine with that.
Yeah, but we need to do some work on helping of a resident.
Why this isn't charging? But why this isn't charging?
I felt pretty good. Fay texted me. She says, she says, how you doing? I text her back, better. Much better.
Doug, is somebody printing these letters of commitment that Dave sent over?
I asked Dave to do it.
Can I go up to Jeremy's office? Or do they have to come out here to us?
We got no power, Scotty. Man, she's completely dead. So we're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish our agenda.
I want them to stint the time on this.
You might look at your settings. I don't, I can just-
I tried out settings. I was going on there, and I was like-
Chairman, we are off of you.
Okay, welcome back everybody. We're at our two o'clock agenda. This is not an action item. This is a director team workshop. And then this will be our last agenda item for the day. So, we can all go down there and chew the fat, as Jeff would say.
I've never said that.
You said that once, I heard it.
I don't want any fat today.
The gift isn't here.
Same for the day.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Who all have we missing?
Nope.
That.
Pat is gone.
And that's gone.
And that's gone.
Booked through today.
And then really, Melissa.
I don't have a chance to look at the Baylor that they're recommending. I think.
You think I do?
It's a side. No, it's an after. I think it's Marathon.
Smash my head trying to keep up.
He was saying the side. The side ones.
Well, you guys might be lucky and just get to talk to it yourself.
It's that much faster.
Yeah. It's true, because I gotta go to Boise when we're done.
It's like, it's like when you get in school, teacher gives you. Metal stick. He wants to report on it here next week. Kind of what I feel like.
Exact same Baylor, right?
Lot to learn. Lot to learn. I'll get there eventually.
I'm not recommending the site.
I'm glad that was on P and Z for a couple of years.
Oh, okay, so you don't work.
Feel inside of extreme going on.
Well, I saw the comments about so much different. Timelines.
They're set on the jet.
Right, with the Baylor's, yeah.
We didn't handle.
We just went.
Morning, I was like.
You know. And said, okay, let's.
Um, no.
At least this one's cut.
I say when I look at.
I would.
I think.
I'm just extremely excited.
I knew you were something. I had to be there. They recommend.
Time.
I don't know.
For that one. It's an input.
No.
Our family's still.
It gets thirty minutes and might take.
Scrapyard.
And you have to tell other people, sorry, we're not gonna get to yours, you gotta come back.
Get a new facility, then we can move it.
All right, I guess. Scheduled this while she was gone, so therefore, I emailed the other ones to see if anybody's coming, we'll see if a Baylor shows up. I think Jeremy's the only other one here, other than Larry who's doing some stuff, so.
A question for you while you're all three sitting here. Were you here when Watkins burned down? Commissioner? Do you remember the CEO of, CFO or whatever of medical, Tom? He promised the citizens of Cascade that he would not go without a pharmacy. That's where I get to go after work, to McCall, again.
No, Pat uses an online.
Three times.
So there's an online.
These are controlled substances.
You gotta, you gotta go up. Yeah, I know that they have been looking for someplace. There's always.
I know Tom has already got a pharmacy at the hospital, but not for public. For the people at the hospital.
Every time I go up there, it's like a family reunion when I go up there standing like, there's six people from Cascade that are just as mad as I am.
Yeah, when everyone still was. That was the eleven year.
Yep. Now we're to get through there.
Oh, it's a long time.
Can I listen to people chewing on the pharmacist and those girls in there? It's like.
I feel sorry for them.
You're doing RIGs, New Meadows Council.
Well, and then Rite Aid's pharmacy is closed down.
Rite Aid's open sometimes.
They don't have help. They don't have any help. They have like one person that can run it.
Online for anything I can.
We are.
And that's, I'm sure that the jail getting theirs out of there has probably helped. They're not doing all the inmates anymore.
Right.
Well, and I think, um, Ben Watkins has got his house on the market, and I don't know if he's even gonna stick around. I'm going. You get an insurance settlement from that building, you're just gonna walk away from all that?
I heard he was way of insurance. I talked, talked to somebody that talked to Bill Joey and they actually lost someone.
Oh, Bill, uh, next time I see Bill. That's the second one that we collapsed on with Mark and he had money in.
I was talking to you last week, talked to Albertson's pharmacist and asked about, you know, the satellite, Savon Pharmacy down here. And said, sounds great. You don't have to have a pharmacist on staff down here, they could do it, they could zoom everything back and forth or whatever. They don't have to have the tech, it's the security they need. We gotta have Fort Knox.
Throw all the pills.
The kicker right now, I think.
I will be very surprised if there's not Albertson's or Rite Aid, you know, Ridley something.
Down here.
I would take bets there's a grocery store down there.
You were saying it decent where somebody else is gonna build a grocery store. Oh, isn't Lake Fork? Oh, Donley? Probably closer maybe, if they have a pharmacy.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, guys, let's talk about what's going well, what's not going well, what you need, what you need to work on.
When the snow off, everything will be fine.
I ain't been that bad at it.
No, it's just this, I can't do work done when I'm plowing.
No, are you out of a plow now that you have your new guy?
We got a new guy, but it's gonna take the rest of the winter to get.
I found it, but it looks like you don't have fifteen minutes on these.
So right now.
You go to fifteen minutes.
This year, your flag is gonna be in a plow, pretty much.
I might be able to get James in it once in a while, but it takes quite a while to get somebody trained.
Choose one.
Especially in a truck.
Choose one and then it just automatically goes.
Hopefully, we have.
It should.
Between storms.
We're supposed to get a little bit of snow this week to hurt me.
Enough that I can see to worry about.
I don't know, there's so many weather apps out there, I gave up on it.
Like I tell my crew, the snows will work, if they don't, we'll go find something else to do.
I wish I could have that motto. Hollywood is snowing.
Have that thing on my truck.
Sheriff's deputy truck.
Working around my house yesterday and all of a sudden my pickup started and I was like.
Started?
What did I do? I must have leaned against my car or something.
Come on, get it, it's out of gas. How's it going with, you know, people calling in? What's your frustration level this year? Has it been better?
It's a lot better. We have gotten so many compliments this year and it's like. Wow. That's a big change from the last couple of years.
What do you think the biggest reason was for that change? Yeah, great staff.
We're going back to. My ex-assistant was a big micromanager. He would cut from a night and.
Hey, come on in.
Always turn to three.
Two.
He would do group texts at night.
What time?
Everybody's plowing. These are people plowing, you don't need to plow.
Got started.
Uh, they need to plow and they didn't. Back to the old deal of, you think you need to go plow, you go plow. That's your route. This is the way it's supposed to be. I'm not gonna go out and tell you when you need to plow.
I need a micromanage.
Nope.
Well, I think that's important, because I know back in Robinson's day, probably when you were first starting it, that he gave this road to that person. This is your road summer and winter.
Summertime's a little hard.
A little harder, because you need.
Well, we don't have twenty-four people.
They watch for plug coverts in the spring.
Oh, yeah. Your route's your route.
It's your route and you're responsible for it. And it builds ownership into it.
We must go back to that.
That was the recommendation from the road advisory board too, is that Jeff give out those roads.
It's, it's helped.
And then you know who to hold accountable too, if it's not getting done.
Yep.
Accountability issues there. Your software's working well, your gear's working.
Constantly inputting. Still haven't started the inventory side of it, she just.
Didn't work one of them yet?
Oh, yeah. That's all she's been doing, it's just eight hours a day.
Before we were talking about road department, do you have any information all down there on these old RS two, four, seven, seven roads? One time you said you had some of that.
All I have is what's on the computer. Shared that with.
Nothing in any sheds or.
Any sheds.
Conversation. Call this morning.
On what?
Campbell Creek. Or Crock Creek. Crock Creek.
Oh, Crock Creek.
Crock Creek, sorry.
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago, if I'm not wrong.
No decision was ever another one. Never made a decision. Have to make some decisions.
Been a while, Neil.
Jeremy, you're doing on IT stuff, is that from a realtor?
All right.
Things are settling down, kind of smoothing out.
That's what I sent to you.
Have you heard on, uh, on band for the title company?
So. I'm embarrassed about that.
Don't be embarrassed.
They have expected, um. Well, their, their new expected patient date is the twenty-seventh of this month. They got a, they got their permit from ITD. Um, I'm assuming if they got hot enough water, they could probably. Or, uh, bore wherever they want. Because they gotta bore under highway fifty-five. I guess it depends on how the, how the ground is on the twenty-seventh when they try and do it. Um, and I say that, I was kind of mad at myself. We have a very high capacity microwave, it's just a little dish going from the YOCS over to Scott Klingon's office, you know? And I don't wanna. We were trying to get the, the Picards to let us do that. That whole thing.
It blew it.
I bought another set of those, and I'd forgotten about them. And one of the works of setting this up, you, weeks ago. This is, this kind of came about because for some reason I had it in my brain that the road department was farther south than the Maritile Building was. I somehow had them swapped around, you know? But, uh, I was working on something that made me realize that it wasn't. And so I was up there, you know, the department is a thousand feet away. I could have used it other, well, I'm going to, I'm setting it up right now. Because we have a good solid connection from the well, except when Zipley changes something. From the road department back to the county already. So if I put that microwave link up, it'll solve all the problems. I wish I would have done that in the beginning, I wish I would have thought about it, but I didn't. I'd forgotten about those, I had those. And it'll be just as good as, if not better than what Zipley's doing. I don't know if we can get out of that contract, but that'll save us nine grand a year.
So you're gonna put it up versus Tesla to make sure it works before you.
Trying to get about this week or next, depending on how quick.
Well, it's the, we're trying to get.
Scott.
Ladders. Conditioned, it's.
Yeah, I know.
If I do this. Do you have a man lift for stuff like that? It's kind of like a booster.
Jeff, that one.
So you signal on to the next man lift.
No, it's actually. It's a paired.
Could you buy a, a man basket?
That'll just straighten.
Trying to get a Maritile building and get extension ladders out in the snow and ice up on the end of the building.
Where I wanted at the Maritile Building, there's not, I mean, there's not, it's right at the front, there's not a lot of snow.
It's round, it's on the backside, there's, we've blown all the snow out there.
There's a, there's a van right across the street.
Yeah.
So the road department side, that's what you do.
Reach far enough. You know, because they've got path in there, we've got all the snow on the sides that we've put. Know where it goes. To reach out with a boom, to get that.
Yeah, that's where it's gonna go, either that corner or.
Gotta remember the chains locked off.
I was hoping to put it on the back, because there's already holes going through the wall.
You need line of sight.
We got the grader shed.
We'd have to try to get it over the shed, we can't get it over that.
Well, so if it's, if they, on the eve of where that, where you walk in. It, it'll shoot right between those two long buildings.
It's gotta be line of sight, right?
You gotta get it to the front of the building.
Well, I think that's great, you guys can at least work that out and, and if there's concern about not ladders and that kind of stuff, look at a man lift, whatever it's gotta take. The other thing that I think we need to talk about is, and I'm fascinated right now, is do we really need broadband in Lake Fork? Because it seems to me like the recreation guys are pretty settled in downstairs. I know they wanted it for a meeting room for this new council, recreation council kind of that we're putting together, but they can use this room for those meetings. And to spend another nine thousand dollars on that building, it's, is it worth it? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm just, I, I make the best recommendation I can for the location that people want to work from. And at the time that we did that, they wanted to move down there.
Right.
And the timing just kind of worked out weird that it didn't get, um. Sort of in, in motion until winter started to come in and then, you know, we ran into this issue with, you know, them not being able to get. All permits from.
An oil power.
Power, and so then it became a spring project. And, um, so in the meantime, as a. As a hybrid solution, they, they, you know, they moved into there, and if, now that they're there. If they like it there and nobody, you guys don't want to do this like thing, then that's, that's.
Well.
It's a decision for the people who want either do or don't want to work down there.
For another, what is that, eighty-four hundred dollars a year? That's my tax dollars, that's your taxes. I do, is it worth it? To me, they seem pretty settled in down there, they seem to like it. And there's even room down there for some big tables if they want to have them down there too. I mean, just because we can doesn't mean we should.
Sure, that's eighty-four hundred dollars.
Get high broadband at the Lake Fork shop.
Yeah, the lengths that go.
Year.
Yeah, the lengths.
Seven hundred a month.
The length that goes to the road department. And then we try to do one to Lake Fork and one to, each one of those is about nine grand a year.
Do you have any, do you have any need for increased?
Well, it's like eighty-seven hundred for.
Well, I just need.
Lake Fork and nine grand for.
Yeah, so yours is.
What did you say?
Yeah, I'm like fascinated with that.
Each one of those links is.
You just say, I didn't hear.
I said, I need computers that work faster than me and I don't, I'm not.
Oh, I didn't, it's like a part of that. Mary and Jeff wants his computers.
Well, we were, we were without internet down there until.
How many kids are on?
Seven o'clock.
Right, there's fifty thousand people.
It doesn't matter. Whatever speed they're going for is what we're getting.
Something.
That's it.
So it's like, Mickey will go, well, I'll email Jeremy and I go.
Should I pay?
Computers are down.
Four dollars a month.
Oh, yeah.
So I gotta pull my phone out and shoot him an email off my phone.
There's always a wraparound.
Yeah, Zipley is, uh, they're doing a lot of infrastructure upgrades and stuff in Cascade. And whatever they're doing, um, I said, like I said this morning, this is the second time. This month that they've done something that has taken either the road department way down, or this time it was both the road department and the McCollanics.
Yeah, we're down until noon.
Yeah, they were right before.
Yeah, I say.
Came back on.
There is a broadband expansion.
From the port?
All the way down to Boise. And the way that the grant was structured, we probably have broadband coming from Valley County. So I'm pretty excited.
You said the port.
Lewiston.
Oh, Lewiston.
They're trying to do a north-south connection point, which would bring, I think it's two hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty.
I'm glad, I hope they come through Valley County, I hope they don't go through Indian.
Do you pay two hundred and fifty, Ken?
Through Valley.
But that's gonna be what, three years out, four years out?
They're trying to push for two.
Two.
Anything else on IT?
Here itself.
Um, so we're, we're doing the, um. PCs, we had the clerks on, um, we're doing the. PAs are finished, we've just gotta go and deploy them this week or next. And then I don't know who we'll do next, maybe the assessors are gonna be one.
Why don't you tell these people one, they might be.
When we get ours, we get ours, I'm not.
It's like laptops.
Yeah.
Scott needs his laptop.
My computers are right.
You need your laptop. Jeff?
So if I have a laptop, do I get a new laptop?
You have a laptop.
I don't know, you never came and took it back, so I still got it.
You ever use it?
Jeff needs one for, does it have a camera on it? We're on Zoom meetings a lot, and he doesn't have anything with, I mean, everybody needs a camera for Zoom.
I went and stole Sarah's or Audrey's off of her computer the other day, because it.
Well, we ran out and issued all the. Cameras that we have, but I just bought some more.
Yeah.
If you own your, your desktop computer.
I stole Audrey's, it's fine, I don't need one now.
Does she need one?
Not right now.
So, yeah, now things are, it's slowed down and smoothed out, we're getting the PCs, um. Down department by department, and then Dylan working on getting iPhones for the sheriff's office set up.
Do you go with Verizon or AT&amp;T?
So those are the ones we went with AT&amp;T, because they wanted to try out first.
Right. My understanding, if they don't work, then we can go back.
All right, Scott. What have you got to share?
He's got good news on the Baylor.
Oh, it's good.
Where can we get it?
Well, trouble is Brandon, the guy that I've been working with at Wesco, he's out till Thursday, but he, um. What he recommended, I got an email, is that we, well, the manual tie, um, he says we don't generate enough. Go through the headache of getting a, um, well, not headache, but the, it's additional cost for an auto tie. Uh, it really jumps it up there. Anybody that's dealt with any type of Baylor knows that the nodders and stuff, the finicky, high maintenance, um, so he recommends we stay with the manual tie. The one they recommended is Marathon Gemini Extreme, and I think Marathon just bought out International, because it looks identical to our current Baylor. And it's really good at multiple materials. Gemini Extreme.
Your goal then is, once we get it here, just to swap them out for now, until we can figure out what kind of.
You get our facility, then move it to there and then do a pit type, if you watch the video that's on that link. Um, it shows they have like a pit that they just dump the stuff and push it into, the conveyor takes it up, none of it dumping it over the side like we're doing now. Beating the car out the side of the unit and everything. Um, so I just have to wait to hear back from them on the cost and then availability. And then I talked to Jim West, as I said, the, um, Friday, um, he was scheduled, clear through the weekend till today. So hopefully, we may have to come up for the Whole Foods or Natural Foods opening, because he put the Baylor in there. We can get up there and do it, or get the part he has the part. Um, we can get up there and do it, or get the part he has the part, and see if we can get ours functional till we can get it replaced. Yeah, hopefully this week, I did send that information to Max at the, if they were. And so, uh, so hopefully we can get like a, live long till we can, uh, get it replaced.
I'm just wondering if we should delay it to Max until we know it's gonna run and we get caught up.
I just shared the information, what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah, but I wouldn't say it's open yet until we get caught up, because we're gonna get deluged the very first two or three days.
Well, I don't, I think once we get it running, they're gonna have to work for a couple of days, um, to get caught up because um, the room right now is just so full of cardboard. Um, and then we have all the other recyclable bins full. We need to get those processed before we start accepting anymore.
Right.
That's kind of my plan.
But theoretically, if we get it fixed by Thursday or Friday, maybe we could be ready to open middle of next week.
Yeah. Okay, they, um, have Procter Terry make sure that why it's available, just to work there till, uh, we're caught up.
Anything for the other departments that we need to know we're not on?
Yeah, we are.
Are we on?
Yep.
Well, Max, that's for you. Anything that the other departments need to know?
As far as what?
Anything that your department, just with them on? I mean, this is just your time to share with each other.
No, I know, I'm, I know we were having trouble with our phones up at the, at the transfer site. Um, Nikki just sent me an email before I got here. I guess it has to do something, they're saying it's something to do with the snow coming off the side of the building, where the phone boxes are attached. So I need to go up and take a look at that. See if that's actually what the issue is or, but anyway, because they've been experiencing trouble with their phones up there, their landlines and stuff.
So Kenzie told me she wrote a grant for the recycling, what that grant's for, and what would it specifically target?
Let's see if we can get to pay for part of the cover.
Okay.
And she says it's expandable, we may be able to expand it to cover our, our building for our, uh, processing.
Awesome.
So it's an expandable type of grant, the way she explained it to me, if we get the funds to do the cover, and then we can expand it to possibly cover the construction of a new, um, processing center.
Awesome.
So have we got any kind of plans or designs for this new place for the Baylor, have we started on that process?
I, I would have drawn up and then I met with Scott and we kind of went over, tried to get their input, since they have a little more expertise in, in the follow ways and recycling type deal.
It's good, Corin.
Yeah, this, we did this before.
Oh, okay, okay.
And stuff, so I actually had a, a local builder, uh, come kind of and give us his input on it too. Kind of kind of side of the existing Baylor building, um, and putting like a, um, a pathway through to it, not right up against it. But, um, so we wouldn't have an issue with the snow coming down. And, um, coming off there and then having a building big enough that can actually tip their truck up, because right now they can back up there, tip it up, only go so far, and then they gotta push it back. They can't tip it up.
Cause of the door.
Yeah, because of the doors.
It's not the building, it's the door.
Looking at doors that possibly go up into the building probably before they come out, um, or make it tall enough that they can dump up. Um, also have the building big enough that we can actually kind of put storage areas. So when we don't have enough cans to make a complete bail, we can store that till we have enough. And then possibly using the old building for storing cardboard and stuff, because that's the one that gets wet, that's not worth the ball anymore.
You might look at barn doors that slide, by the way. You can also look at doors like, uh, Hapeport Hanger that.
Yeah, the ones that fold.
Like that in your door.
Yes.
That's the issue with that building is the door is too small.
Yeah, because they've already ripped, damaged it at one time and stuff, so.
Where are we at with the recycling center cover? I'm really worried about liability.
That's what the grant's for.
As far as what, liability, as far as what?
I mean, the, the slickness inside that recycling center this year.
Yeah.
We got quite a few complaints that people were falling, hitting their heads.
Yeah.
But I mean, let's park him out at D nine or any.
But you go as that way, they have to have some responsibility for them to come there. We're, we have our sanding truck now, so we can, if, you know, Steve's gonna say, hey, it's getting bad here. So, uh, so we, we can, now with the truck, we're, it really works out great, we can go up there and run. We already have once, and stuff, but, um.
I'm worried less about D nine because that's their liability, I'm worried about.
Yeah. I mean, it's anywhere you go, any parking lot. People have got, you can't, they've got to take some responsibility, it's winter, it's even like.
But our, our solution is that cover.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Do we have it on order, do we have it?
It's drawn up, I've got to get the, the, I've got to talk, ask questions for Cindy and for Annette, um, just, if the conditional use permit will, you know, I don't know what was approved. I know they turned down the expanded aluminum with the cover over it, like Roberts has for his hay. So, I mean, it's, it's.
Metal structure.
It's, it's like any of the buildings that are around it that Meckl have or has or anything else, so.
Is that part of the CUP was the metal roof? I think you're good to go, but we better.
I'm not pulling that, I haven't.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, basically we're kind of doing a pole barn, you know, is what we're doing, so. But it's metal, it's not pole, it's, you know, steel structure. Um, I need to get the engineered, um, drawings from, um, R and M Steel and, uh.
He's gonna do a.
Jeff, do we?
It's hip roof.
Yeah.
Do we need to do any engineering on that entryway, or you're satisfied now that we're getting the runoff correct, or? Because you were waiting for parametrics to do some engineering.
Oh, that's. I don't know, we ever got anything back from them?
Oh, we did, Jeff, and you went in and did the improvements and.
Oh, we just, we just put a bunch of gravel.
Put more gravel in. Look at it in the spring, that'll tell you what we gotta do.
That's what we're gonna have to kind of look at, this is, once we do put that up, then we're gonna have snow sliding off on the west side where the exit road is.
Exactly.
And stuff is what we're gonna end up with.
That exit road out to the west farther.
But you leave that stormwater management plan engineered, so the water doesn't run off into the. Everybody else has to do it.
So you put cleats on the roof and it just stays there?
Ask them about how.
Yeah, that, yeah. I didn't.
Down on the ground.
No, I gotta worry about leaks. I hope guys know what they're doing.
There's some collaboration that needs to happen, we'll do all of that, so let's make sure that's.
Do a peak deal up there, but they had other ideas.
I bought some big, heavy-duty aluminum slide stops, because I didn't want the snow to curl off and wipe out those new AC units. So they came down and, I don't know how many I bought, it was only a hundred dollars for like two hundred cleats. They rented a lift, went up there and put them all in and. Yeah, they're all around now.
Ripped them out, yeah.
Ripped them out. Don't know what the holes look like, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about now.
About thousand holes in.
I wanted to do a pyramid up there, but they thought they knew better.
Yeah, they just did the normal stagger thing, I think.
City McCall Post Office.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they were worried about holding too much snow on the roof, wouldn't hold it.
No, our roof's long, the old part of the shop doesn't hold snow because it doesn't have the good insulation in it. So it all slides onto the addition where the offices are and that, that's where it stops. It builds up and then it slowly creeps off. But the way it creeps off and curled, it.
The corn is on it.
Wipe off those AC units.
We put those, yeah.
That part of the. We thought we had a good idea, but.
I have an answer for you, so Pomont State Armory sells an actual real blowtorch, like a fire gun. Five hundred bucks.
Can you give me one?
Five hundred bucks on Pomont State Armory?
Can you give me one?
Twenty, twenty feet.
I got lots of diesel.
Diesel? Yeah.
Snap, nap, something like that.
Now, the other thing is, I've spent one on one ever since I saw it, just because it sounds fun.
I've seen those.
It's on camera, guys. We're gonna do things legally and safely.
Well, I know that's been an issue in the past because we've lost those windows before.
Yeah.
That kind of deal, and it's almost like maybe we need to extend that roof out a few more feet.
Well, we usually keep up on it, but that was Snowmageddon when I was out plowing too to help keep up and we never, never got a chance to pull the snow away from the building like we usually do and it just kept building up and then it warmed up and rained and three feet of snow came off and took all our windows out.
Okay, we're not Mammoth Lakes. It's true. Good point, that's a horrible business right there. Um, I think it's always just our usual. Sounds like Scott needs some.
Who is, uh, Gary Swain working?
I'll have to pull it and look at what.
How's Gary Swain doing, he's new now on the board?
Been at one meeting and he did great. He's had one meeting, he called today and talked for forty-five minutes. Caitlin is our new P and Z.
I remember.
Um, no, I think we're gonna have a really good P and Z commission, they have agreed to meet once a month. We couldn't come up with one specific day because this month is this way and that month's that way, so we're gonna have to decide every month what day it's gonna be. Is Scott gonna need anything? I'll have to look at the CUP. None of the recycling, but on the addition for that, that, uh, storage shed in the back of it. So you might just double check that we don't apply for any permits there, or you don't need it.
I don't think we have a CUP on that.
Is that the East Lake Fork?
On the Baylor.
Yes, you have one. I heard the CUP issued a long time ago for the recycling portion.
Of the, the recycling where the Baylor's at down there?
I believe so.
I'm not concerned, just make sure.
Well, it's pretty, before me.
Probably before the Baylor was even there, it was when the old shed burned down, probably.
They stored everything and.
The other thing before we move on is, in the recycle area, just be careful because the groundwater's really high. So if you go down and dig a pit to bury this Baylor down, there's gonna be problems, issues with water. So we may have to hauls fill in, build it up, get it where we want. We found that out, or it's pickleball courts. It's a wet area.
So I think my interest, P and Z, is to know what the county commissioners, you know, what groups you're representing. And then, you know, we know who to go to to talk. Department head, but let your over Central District Health, sir, we're serving on.
We did that last week and I lost mine and Sherry's gonna email us the latest greatest.
I got my lay on the desk.
And it'd be really interesting for me. Sherry, I talked to certain, I've talked to him about certain things.
That out?
I will.
I don't know what happened to mine, I thought I put it in there.
It was on your agenda next week.
Department heads.
Sorry, missed it.
I wrote your name on a whole lot of those.
I know I did, you're still on mine. What'd you do, steal mine, is that where it went?
On certain committees.
Put stuff in that cabinet.
I'm interested in what committees they're representing, so I know who to talk to about what.
Isn't that on the website?
We'll get that updated.
Before we move on to Skip, I think you guys should know too, today we met with the fire chiefs today and we're looking at doing an override for EMS. Fire, just the EMS side of it, to the tune of the bow, one point eight million, somewhere around there, maybe closer to two million. On top of what they got now, so that we can get those guys flush, that's gonna be, gotta do it this year, it's gonna be probably on the ballot next year.
Is that all Valley County?
All of Valley County.
Don't they each have their own?
That's Fire District, Fire Districts are totally different than the EMS side of it.
Okay.
Yeah, Bessis County.
In Huracan, gotcha. And that was one of our questions to Chief Hall, is, well, if we do this, will you still run yours? He said, I still need fire guys.
And the problem is that we're gonna run up against a road district running too, because we are gonna have to figure out how to replace that.
It's gonna be tough because I know the hospital's looking at it override too and a lot of stuff coming down the road.
Kenzie's working on that, raise grant to the S Bridge. Talked to her about this morning.
Can we get a four oh four permit to fill the lake with salt? They won't issue a super.
Won't let you do it anymore?
No possible way.
I had Kenzie sit in on a NACO, um, presentation on grants and funding that's out there right now.
That's this raise money, I think, or AISE, don't know what it stands for, but.
I'm just wondering if we should go ahead and get some kind of a cost estimate on it, I know you've talked about twenty-five million or, but I would really like to nail that, kind of nail that down a little bit. What is it, what's the total cost?
Fifteen to thirty million.
They have a spread there.
Only fifteen million.
You want a wooden bridge or you want a concrete bridge?
Is, is that a totally new bridge or?
That's a fourteen-hundred foot long bridge across there. West Roseberry's on a section line. So if you look at it on Google Earth, it's a straight line.
So you put pillars in there or?
Pillars every, probably a hundred and twenty feet across there.
Would that be tying into the original road that comes out so far?
Yeah, it, the good thing about what I'm, how my brain works is do ninety-nine percent of the new bridge without disrupting traffic, because of the way it kind of swoops in.
And I'm assuming you'll leave the old bridge there as a ancient bridge?
Yeah, and then we gotta figure out who's gonna maintain it, who's gonna inspect it.
Is there sewer, sewer pipes hanging on that?
That's your, that's your sewer.
Oh, boy.
Two of them in and out.
I'm assuming we're gonna do like Horseshoe Bend and put sewer pipes in this new bridge?
Probably just leave them right where it is, already, they're already there. I don't know, that's a North Lake deal.
That's what they did in the bridges, uh, what'd you say? In Horseshoe Bend, the south bridge that they just repaired, they put sewer lines through that bridge deck.
Oh, yeah.
And it was millions more.
Yeah, it's better to.
I know Horseshoe Bend spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the city money for the lighting, because they wanted it lit. So they made Horseshoe Bend pay that cost.
Better to have the bridge fabbed up with pre, pre-drilled hangers, pre-installed hangers on the bottom and hang stuff from them and running it through it.
If you left the old bridge, which they say is a hundred percent s- solid.
Yeah, it's, it's not rated poor by any means, it's still rated good.
Still leave that infrastructure in place.
It's just functionally obsolete in my mind for the traffic nowadays, it's just, nothing wrong with it.
Rebuild West Mountain from Amarak Falls to Blackhawk and there's the traffic that way.
You're rich.
Yeah, so much of the traffic comes from Boise in terms of Donley. You know, I don't know how much traffic you get from the north, but we have talked about that too, about finishing off from Amarak Falls north toward McCall and then routing people out that way. But I don't know how many people go out that way, I don't.
Traffic counts, Norwood, yeah, we probably should run some traffic counts this summer on all those roads.
I think all people know subdivisions, they're coming to Donley to go to school.
Or go to McCall.
There'd probably be a lot more traffic if the road was a road, I mean, I drive up there at least a couple times a year for whatever reason. And it's a slow road, it's dirt, it's pothole, but if it was paved and it was fast, it probably wasn't even a road there.
I take it a lot, because I live right off West. I would come down that way instead of fifty-five a lot if it was a decent drive.
So you didn't have to turn at Donley.
No, just so I didn't have to.
Right, true.
I mean, it's true, I mean, when you look at north-south routes, you know, we're gonna have to look at all that.
I'd rather drive slower and not deal with knuckleheads during the time.
So while we're talking about bridges, they're putting the culvert in this week, side drives. Next week, with the weather staying like it is, hopefully we can get the grider set next week.
You got the crane up there yet?
One crane's been sitting there, with the big three hundred and twenty-six ton crane. It's.
Coming up.
It's a very precise timeline on that. If they go through the crane, it's snows for a week. And to have that crane sit up there, that is a phenomenal amount of money.
Like helicopters on a fire?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Skip your, um, county-wise stuff, so that's, we're just informing each other.
The general management discussion we want.
So we're, we've had phones forever, but we're officially going to our new phones. And I just need to finish up, we need to, can't get messages on some of them, don't know how to program, so, um, we're gonna get that short up here shortly and so our phone number's gonna change. And, and get that out through the Supreme Court and through our agencies that we deal with. Outside of that, um, I don't know. Outside of that, I don't know if there's a whole lot you guys would be interested in, there's, I can tell you information as far as what's happening in our community on the drug side of things. Fentanyl's finally kinda come in, and we've had, The Rock's been open now, through V Corp, Valley County Open Response, Villaville Grant. But really, in our community, it's just FEDs such as used disorder, primarily alcohol, in Valley County. But The Rock had five intakes that were opioid-specific last month, which is a new record, so. The trend coming up, and I just encourage all department heads to be educated on Naroxone, and have that available, and just know that it's free. A loxone. It's, it's what you give people if they're, they're overdosing, you can spray it up their nose, or you can give them an injection.
Narcan?
Narcan.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, there's a different, um.
So that's a good, that's a really good point, Skip, so how do we find out if all the departments have it available?
Well, it's, it's free, I mean, through Central District Health, there's, there's so many avenues where we would have to pay a penny to get it. And really, if anybody wants it, just let me know and I could hook you up. The thing you have to remember about it is, it is temperature sensitive. So you can't leave it in your car through the summer and winter and have it effective, it's one of those, like the sheriff's department, they pull it out, you know, and then after six months, they switch it out. But it's just one of those things that, you could be anywhere, you could be in the back roads in Yellow Pine, right, and somebody's doing a punch kick on the road, and it's, there's no liability in giving it. People on go, they can't hurt them, like, it's not, it's not gonna poison somebody if you give to them, if you misdiagnose them, so. I'd say that's just something to be.
I think that's a really good call. I'll talk to Pat about that in HR, and just see how we can make sure that's in all departments and people are trained.
Well, and you can go right online, so for my department, we did, you can go onto several websites, about fifteen minutes, tells you what to look for, what to do, how to do it, how to store it. So it doesn't take like an all-day training, fifteen minutes on the computer, it's pretty basic, and they all have instructions on them too.
We actually called non-emergency the other day, because I'm driving down the bypass, and a guy in nylon shorts and a t-shirt was walking down the road. And it is thirty-four degrees and snowing, and I'm like, you need to go check. Mental health issue, because.
It could be a local.
Well, it was, but I don't know what he was on, maybe warm, but I was one.
Yeah, I think I saw that guy.
I made him go, I called and made him go out and check on him. We don't need to do that sometimes.
Do we have anybody in juvenile?
Nobody in detention, um, right now, and juvenile numbers, P D just presented.
Yep, and she did a great job.
She did well, and she is, she's outstanding, she's only very attentive, but she's very competent in her field, so appreciate her a lot. Right now, we're meeting, the other meeting that I have, Jacque and Molly are meeting with Brian, and Sheriff's Department, I think it's Latrell, Kevin, and maybe somebody else. And we're just talking more about the, our connection between probation and the sheriff's department, and expectations, and education, you know. Cause there's, there, there's a big difference, and there's certain things that in cop brain, you don't quite get until you're told, and on our side too, you know, you need that cooperation and, and the education, so you can kinda get. So, looking to expand that. Stateside, I'm doing those juvenile justice committee, training committee that I'm on tomorrow, and we've switched to Archon, which is what all law enforcement uses for our defensive tactics. And we've proved that, and we're looking at updating all the, well, we already got done with probation, we're looking at updating. The train, education, the curriculum for detention, and that's just one of those processes you gotta trudge through and read it through a bunch of stuff, and then ask people that really know what they're doing. And I was looking for people to help teach a post, you don't actually have to be in the field, cause it's really more about, as long as you understand the curriculum, what we need is good teachers, people that understand adult learning theory, you know? And so, anybody that's ever interested in that, that you could have zero experience in criminal justice, but if you're a good teacher, you're a good teacher.
Are they? How is this, do the schools reciprocate on any of this with you guys?
So, well, the post, that's police officer standard training, so that's where all the academies are for Idaho State Police, Sheriff's Department, McCall PD, adult probation, juvenile probation, juvenile detention. That's where your academies are, and they don't really, they do like a general reach out, but they haven't done a good job in advertising it, and actually reaching out to teachers, which I don't know why.
Yeah.
Um, so a lot of times what you have are, you have people like me that have been doing it for twenty years, that can be an expert in the field, but still not necessarily a good teacher. Um, and so that's just something we've been working on, is just trying to find people that are doing it, and it's a, it's a small commitment, you have to, you know, spend the time to be adequate with curriculum, and understand it well. But most academies, when you're talking about teaching, you're talking about two or three days, three times a year.
Yeah, and I'm talking about, I'm talking about in our school districts, our teachers in the school districts, and they're next to these kids twenty-four seven. Are any of them on board with any of this teaching or?
As I said, they haven't, I don't think they've reached out to the school districts, I don't, I don't know why, that's, that's a really good, or, or, with State University, or. You know, you think about a lot of people going through the program that are trained to be teachers or professors or whatever.
Yeah.
But, um, it's been an ongoing problem to find.
Isn't it also the case this year, they're not even having posts because they can't find?
They had to cancel like two different patrol academies. So ISP didn't lose any, it, it's just the patrol academy, or a patrol and a detention. That's it, and, and my little piece, just so you understand, so I'm on the Training Council for Juvenile Justice, so I, I hear about the rest, but I don't really have any way in or say, but. It was just, it's funding, money, right?
There you go, Neil, money.
And, uh, so they had to, but they had enough, the way I understand it, still to get the people through it, and, um, I don't know how it works for law enforcement. But for adult misdemeanor or juvenile, you have one year to get certified, and then you can get extensions based on circumstances like COVID. But after one year, you have to, your certification, if you're gonna manage caseload. So I, I don't think that works the same with patrol, I think those dudes have to, ladies have to do that first before they can do their field, their field stuff, but. Otherwise, I don't, there's nothing really, I can't think of any significant laws or statutes that have really changed, that would affect the county, you know, they're, they're looking at doing the rule of AD stuff, doing that legislatively. To change the verbiage, so it says supervisors aren't in there, anyway.
There's a lot of probation, but not probation supervisors, right?
Well, so, that's it, but there's, the problem with that is, in the state, there's a lot of small counties, like Idaho County, for example, okay? AD and McDonald, where she's, she's me, she's the administrator, but she also carries a, a full caseload, and so. That was, that was just problematic, cause it's not a good fit for a lot of our rural communities. And, um, working on the interlock stuff that we've talked about, and, um, getting a little bit deeper in that, and having more people pay attention to that. And trying to figure out why that is such a problem, and where the disconnect is, and I, and I really think that once the law enforcement agencies. Are putting in, saying, hey, we need to know, we need to understand this, and they get trained on actually where to look at it, I think that'll make a difference. So interlock, if you get a DUI, you have to have an interlock bike, that's, you have to blow into before you can start your car. And then it makes you keep on blowing, so, cause a lot of people don't start it, then maybe start drinking after they're, that's, that's really a thing.
Once the car starts, they keep starting drinking.
Yeah, or they'll have their kid blowing it, or whatever, now it takes, it takes a picture, but, um, it's been an ongoing problem where, for years, people have this requirement, and they get pulled over. And half the time, they shouldn't be driving anyway, but they have to, they shall, have an interlock, they get pulled over, and law enforcement doesn't even know about it. And it's not just Valley County, I mean, statewide, and it's, it's a ridiculous problem, because statute says if you get this, that you're required to, by law, take your driver's license, surrender it. Get another one, and that has right on there, interlock required, when law enforcement pulls over anyone, there's a few things that they see, okay? Automatically, they're gonna see if there's a warrant, they're gonna see if there's a valid driver's license, right, suspended or not, and the other thing is interlock, but I had McCall PD pulled up for me. And so they get this, you know, they're looking at their laptop, and they get all this information, and I don't know if you've ever seen NCIC stuff, but it, it's like old school kinda computer look to it, where there's a lot of dots and dashes. What do you call that one, back in the day when it was?
Form screen.
Anyway, so, on this very, at the very end of it, if, if they scroll up, depending on how big their screen is, there's this one thing, and it says, it's all one word, and it says, interlock, R Q. That's it, so that's the only notice that, that they get, and that's assuming that the courts got information, or the law enforcement got the information to ITD, and ITD then again, got that information properly sent back to N T S I, you know, the, the system. So, long story short, kind of something I've been working on for years, and I kinda gave up, but, um, that's, our community kinda resprun that, and a few other agencies are kinda saying, you know. We need, we need to do better about that, pay attention about, sure that people aren't driving without that, if that's a requirement.
The legislature is in session, and if you guys have anything that touches one of your departments, your divisions that you want pushed, remember to reach out to one of the three of us. I sit on the Legislative Committee for Idaho Association of Counties, so I'm talking about this stuff on a regular basis, but, um, I know that you guys all, or Cindy does anyway, she's got planners, and. I don't know if you have legislative, well, I think IT does, I don't know.
Have I see?
Jeremy, are you going the IT part, is there an IT this, is the end of this month?
End of this month? You're going to the?
Is there? I'm gonna see if I got that even.
Apparently he's not going.
Well, I know they started an IT group a couple years ago, back when David was, and I don't know if they're still functioning or not.
I think they did, I went to one last year, and they, they didn't have one for COVID, and I went to one. I'll, I'll look and see where the next one is.
I think it's on Thursday and Friday, cause I think there was.
Towards the end of that week.
I'm interested, on the short-term rentals, the impact areas, the local option tax, those are all conversations I've had today.
Local option, the L O T?
That one is being reintroduced.
That one is being reintroduced.
Yeah, I just saw Mike Moehl doesn't kill all of that, because he's already stated that there's gonna be no taxes.
Well, the best part about the lot is that it's on visitors, it's not on locals, so coming here, be there, fair share.
Can you hurry second as the IT director meeting?
Locals have to pay that?
The riverside.
For the restaurant or anything?
On heads and beds, so it's on rest, or it's on hotels, resort tax, so you stay in a hotel and are bed and breath.
About when I go to McCall and go to May Hardware, and they charge me one percent lock tax.
That's City McCall only.
Oh.
So this is, this is specific to hotels, motels, and VRBOs, short-term rental stuff.
Right now, the cities can do it, but the counties can't.
Okay, oh, that's right, yes, I remember that, a couple years ago.
Here.
And this would be on the state.
My little spare horses would ride out.
That's right.
The state charges two percent right now, and that goes to social, or that goes to a media campaign to bring visitors to the state.
Sure is interesting.
We're asking to increase that by two percent, give it back to the counties, that it was actually, yeah, to mitigate impacts for the short term.
Hundred percent to get more visitors, we should get the two percent, because we gotta put up with them.
We're trying to mitigate that impact, whether it's for roads or housing, or whatever that would look like.
Yeah.
Is there anything you wanna add to this conversation today? I know you're not a.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate your.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody got anything else? If not, we're gonna call it a day. We're all good? I think this is good that we all mean to kind of talk about each other's problems, and appreciate you guys working together on the IT, the broadband issues. Contract it out, or we can save a bunch of money, do it ourselves, so, if it's over your head, feel free to say, I need help. Rent contractor do this, I can't do it on that time, whatever those issues are, just, if you come to us, we're here to help. Or not.